Good, that was very good.
I hear heels.
That was classic.
They're not mine.
I do too. Sylvia.
That was me, what?
Thought it was maybe Kathy.
Okay, um, it is seven thirty.
Do you reserve yours?
It's seven thirty and I'd like to call our meeting to order if you could all please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Belkey.
Here.
Belzak.
Here.
Clistic.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Marques.
Here.
MacIver.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Seven present, in the absence of Mayor Weaver until she's able to arrive. Can I have a motion for Mayor Protem, please?
Motion for Joe Marques.
Second.
Are there any other motions on the floor for Mayor Protem? Okay, roll call, Shower.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
MacIver.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
Seven ayes. Motion passes.
Okay, we have a quorum that leads to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Again, this is an opportunity for anybody in the audience who has a non-agenda item that they'd like to present. Does anyone out there have anything? Guess not. Brings us to the approval of the minutes. First set of minutes is the April fourth, twenty sixteen Committee of the Whole. Do I have a motion to approve? Moved by Aldman Shower, seconded by Aldman Kenny. Questions? The roll.
Shower.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
MacIver.
Aye.
Seven ayes and minutes are approved.
Uh, then our second set of minutes is the April eighteenth, twenty sixteen City Council. Um, motion? Aldman Shower. Seconded by Aldman Clistic. Questions? The roll.
Shower.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Belkey.
Epstein.
Kenny.
Aye.
Um, MacIver.
Epstein.
Marques.
Aye.
The two abstentions go with the ayes, so that would be seven.
At least as to receiving of communications, does anybody have, does anyone have communications tonight? Aldman Clistic.
Thank you. I received communication with somewhere just around the corner of the grand reopening of the Baskin Robbins located in seven three seven Plainfield Road. Uh, we're having a big ribbon coming ceremony at one o'clock on Saturday. Uh, there'll be painting for kids, live entertainment, and ice cream for all, so I hope to see everyone there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Aldman Kenny?
Uh, thank you. I've got, uh, two communications. Since we started our meeting and workshop, um, we all received an email from Bob Rosetko, um, twelve hundred block of Allison, regarding the Darian magazine, that there was no mention of any of the tax increases that were inside, that we've done during the last budget session. He thought they would be in there, um, to let our residents know about those upcoming taxes increases. And secondly, as a follow-up, um, Paul Nosick and I were, have been in contact with Laura Hoist, a clerk of the Downers Grove Township, with regards to our residents being billed improperly for the unincorporated Downers Grove Township portion of their garbage program with Groot trucking. And I'll, I'll let Mr. Nosick take it from there.
Thank you, Joe. Um, yes, I spoke to her as well, and she said that they would be following up and if there were any questions or problems, they would resolve them. We also did put on Direct Connect, um, for the residents who do receive Direct Connect, uh, that if they received a bill from Groot to contact us and not pay the bill. So I will follow up with her this week as well and see if there's been any more complaints.
How did they happen, Paul?
They got a list from, um, the township assessor and the list was just had some.
Actually, I think they got their list from the two previous contractors, so, and I'm not, I'm not gonna, you know, pretend I know which, which the two were, but it sounds like they had, um, a compiled list of both, and it went out. And I would've thought it would've been easy to pinpoint what the city of Darian ones are, on the unincorporated, based on, on the addresses, but apparently that wasn't the case.
Does it have anything to do with the fact that Hinswood has a Darian address and a Darian zip code?
It's the Farmingdale subdivision.
It's the Farmingdale sub, not to Hinswood, because Hinswood has Groot as well.
Right, but I mean, we would think that if any resident address you see with, whether like an eighteen W or a nine south, you would, you would know, and if it's, if it's a plain, you know, plain address, say seventy-one hundred Hudson, like, as in, in this case, recently, you would think that it would be an easy catch.
Anything else? Any other communications? Aldman Belkey.
Yes, I think we've all heard of this communication. I know we talked about it in the work session. This has to do with the communication from the seventy-three hundred block of Eleanor, who is a resident that lives near the Hinsdale South High School. And there was an issue last week with the, um, a safety issue with the people parking on both sides of the street. Uh, just wanted to let residents know that we did get that communication, and we are talking about that in new business item D tonight.
Thank you. Anything else? That takes us to the mayor's report. I know the mayor's report, we have consideration of a motion to approve the reappointment of Frank Novarini to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners. Do we have a motion? Aldman Shower, seconded by Aldman Belkey. And the roll?
Discussion.
Discussion. People want to discuss it? And the roll.
Shower.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
Got the wrong listing here. Kenny.
Aye.
MacIver.
Aye.
Oh, Clistic, I'm sorry. I knew I forgot somebody. I have an old listing. I apologize. Clistic?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Frank, you might come for him?
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
Aye.
State your name.
Frank, number eight.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The state of Illinois, the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. And here's your new.
There's one.
No, no, you're reappointed, so.
Oh, I thought, sorry, I missed.
But you know what? I don't need the mayor's signature, so let me get that and I'll get it to you. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Thanks, Rick.
It brings us to the city's clerk report. Join.
Just one item. Um, meet and greet will take place with the mayor on Monday, May sixteenth at six P M. Here at City Hall in the upstairs conference room.
Thank you. City Administrator's report, Brian.
Uh, thank you. We have, I have one item, a reminder. Aldman Kenny briefly brought it up in terms of a communication from one of our residents, but water bills will be coming out most likely next week, and residents receiving those bills will see the, the new rate on those bills for the first time. We've, uh, basically put the information on all of our social media, um, Direct Connect, different things. We did not specifically put it in the newsletter. When we were working on that, on the last newsletter, we obviously have a certain amount of space, and the information on the water rate, plus the gasoline and food and beverage tax, most of the documents were a bit longer than would have fit in the newsletter, in my opinion. Uh, so we didn't put anything in there, but certainly we've tried to get that information out in a number of ways. Um, and I've received a few calls, uh, after Friday's Direct Connect, and we had information. Uh, but certainly the intent is to let as many residents know as possible, so I expect when the bills do go out next week, we'll get calls, we'll be able to update residents, and hopefully, when we're updating them, we'll also get more people on our Direct Connect.
Couldn't we have just, just touched upon the increases and if they, you know, placed it in the magazine, if there's, if you had any other questions to call City Hall?
Yeah, I mean, you, we can put, we could put something in there. If you have question, you know, the rate's going up. Certainly, it, it, it's not sufficient to explain it. Most of the, uh, like, the website and other places, we just have sufficient room. We certainly could've done that, and, uh, again, in hindsight, I, I probably would've done that, but, uh, in this case, we hadn't, but we certainly tried to get the word out in a number of ways. And obviously, at, at, a lot of the budget meetings, we talked about those three items as well, but, uh, the intent was to get information out to as many people as possible. So, uh, we'll continue to do that through the, you know, bill process payment and, and as we update the council on the revenue that is generated from both of those taxes.
Obviously, the next magazine comes out, this tax will be in, in place for quite some time. Maybe we can address, maybe, I mean, we.
Yeah, we can.
Apologize to the readers that, who typically read Darian magazine for their communication that, that wasn't, you know, wasn't put out at the, at the last.
And we could put, we, we could put some, uh, some up-to-date information in there.
Sure.
Thank you, that's all I had.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, that takes us to our Department head information and questions. We have a report tonight from Dan or the chief.
Just one quick, uh, the follow-up on the I fifty-five, uh, managed lane project. There's another, uh, open house coming up at, on Tuesday, May seventeenth, from four P M. to seven P M. That will be at the Holiday Inn Countryside Conference Center. Again, and that's at sixty-two oh one Jolly Road in, in Countryside. Again, this is just a further enhancement of the proposed project on I fifty-five for the managed lane project, so we just received that Friday.
Dan, that letter that you sent us copies of, and then you sent us the addresses that the letter was going to, has that letter gone out to those?
Yes, yes it has. It just went out, uh, Friday.
Okay. I forwarded that to a couple of residents who I know live within the, that area, and they appreciate that, but their concern is, they don't want to get their hopes up too high because there's, it's only if the money is there.
That's correct. And again, what Aldman Marques is referring to is, uh, for the viewing residents, we sent, uh, the mayor sent a letter out in respect to, uh, the receptors. Uh, the receptors, again, as part of the I fifty-five managed lane project, receptors are referred to as properties or residences. In, in our case, I believe we have three hundred and eighty-five or three hundred and fifty-eight receptors, or properties that will have a casting vote for the sound wall. Again, the sound wall has to be approved by the residents or the receptors. And there'll be a separate postcard coming out, uh, within the next several weeks from Idaho. We don't have that exact schedule yet.
Ted?
Uh, Dan, any updates on the strip mall? Have any new tenants?
Matter of fact, Lady Jane Cutterys, uh, signed a lease, uh, that also happened late Friday, so they're in the process of, uh, securing their architectural plans. And hopefully, we'll have some more good news coming up this week, yep.
Dan, last week at Municipal Services, we questioned a little bit about, uh, Mr. Manos's corner over there. You want to update the council a little bit on that?
Currently, there's no set plan in place. We've been trying to work with, uh, a couple of establishments, um, in, in the venue of, uh, of a white cloth, um, restaurants. We have not gotten very far with that. I know that John has been talking, speaking with his partners in respect to putting up a sign there, built a suit, and we were encouraging, staff was encouraging him to, uh, for a restaurant site on that corner.
He doesn't have to put that on the sign though, does he, Dan? He just, we just want to make, to make sure there's a for sale sign on that corner.
Correct, and currently, there's not, him and the partners and himself are still in, in discussion in respect to what they're gonna do exactly.
There've been, there were a number of, um, tenants who've talked to me about the condition of the parking lot, and they're quite concerned about the condition of the parking lot, especially over on the supermarket side, and if you do drive over there, there's significant potholes and cracks. Is there anything we can do in terms of correspondence with John to have him address that parking lot?
It's getting to a point where I think the staff is gonna start looking at the next, uh, level, uh, whether it's gonna be property maintenance code violations. Uh, keep in mind, we did something similar to the Darian central on, uh, at Q. We ended up taking that, uh, gentleman to court, and, uh, the judge basically gave him, uh, an option called three phases. Uh, the first phase recently got completed. While I'm hoping it doesn't escalate to that, um, I will be having a conversation with John. Currently, we're working now with that Speedway agreement with the easement, and, uh, between Speedway and Brookhaven. So, we're at the midnight hour on that negotiation, so I think once that comes into play, that we'll have a further, further discussions with, uh, Mr. Manos and, uh, regarding the property on the corner, as well as the parking lot situation.
Any questions for Dan? Sylvia?
Um, uh, to follow up on that, the concerns there is, Dan, as you know, I keep sending you stuff too, but it's also, um, when there's heavy rains, there's flooding issues in that parking lot, as well as, and I know that, um, it sounds like the, it's not necessarily an, any kind of a code violation currently, but with that, um, auto parts store, there is, very often, people buy the parts and basically use that parking lot as a giant garage and then leave their debris. Um, I'm not sure, you know, it is not, I guess, a code violation, because I think it ended up going to the, um, Darian police, who really couldn't do anything to enforce anything there, but that might be something to consider in terms of, you know, how we handle those kind of situations, especially with, you know, the new, new, you know, area across the street. It really kind of brings down, brings down the neighborhood to see that going on. I mean, and it's unsafe. I mean, there's people like literally working underneath their vehicles, you know, changing oil and things like that in a park, open parking lot. And I've sent you photos of that.
And then they're leaving the debris in the parking lot.
Yes, correct. And all the oil.
And the oil.
Yeah.
You know, and there, and it's, and take away that portion of it, there is portions of that shopping center too that you're still seeing rock salt along, you know, like, near, where Brookhaven Shopping Center is using that one storefront for storage, and in front of, you know, anytime, you know, Anytime Fitness, and you've asked, you, you ask, I asked somebody at Anytime Fitness about, do they sweep out in front? And the guy goes, you know, they're supposed to pay, do it, we're not doing it. So, you know, there's a, there's a, you know, there's more to it than just, you know, advanced auto parts parking lots. There's something within, throughout that whole complex, not, you know, keeping up, you know, cleanliness.
In respect, in respect to the flooding situation, there was a problem with the detention facility, so there shouldn't be any more flooding. Um, as of last week, the restrictor did get clogged again. That was because of the reseeding and the straw that was, uh, placed into the detention center, it wasn't pinned down properly. So, hopefully, that's the end of that situation. In respect to the parking lot, I know that I've been very sensitive on that project, or on the parking lot with John. Uh, he knows the position of the city council, um, and will reiterate that to him in respect to the cars that are being worked on. Um, there are signs, uh, missigns have been put up in front of the auto parts store, uh, that's basically state no working on vehicles. Again, short of the city not having any enforcement powers, we're very limited to what we can do. Um, and, and John's more than happy to have the police cite him, but again, there's no ordinance that we have in place to be able to go back and cite the violators. I'll take a look at also on that rock salt. Uh, I'm not familiar with that situation, but I'll make sure that gets back over to, uh, Mr. Manos. I know that he's been, he was out there last week, I believe it is. They were doing landscape cleanup and remulting some of the beds.
Any other questions for Dan? Aldman Clistic?
Thank you. Just a quick question for the I fifty-five managed project. I read somewhere over the weekend they're thinking about maybe making it a tollway?
Correct. That's why it's referred to as a managed lane, and that's, that's the convoluted portion of it, whether it's gonna be, um, the governor has brought into play a private partnership. Um, again, I don't have those details, whether the private partnership is gonna involve private tolling, open tolling such as A three fifty-five. Um, I couldn't even tell you if the lanes are gonna be blocked off, uh, with some type of guard rail as an express lane, such as ninety ninety-four. So those are all details that apparently they're working on, and I, I don't have any more information than that.
That'd probably be part of the funding there, probably, that's missing.
Yeah, that could very well be, and again, and it's all we keep hearing is, uh, budget pending.
Dan, did everyone receive a copy of that email where I dot talked about redoing, uh, Frontage Road from Cass to Oldfield?
Yes, and, and again, that's one of those situations where it's budget pending. Um, and for the public, uh, for the viewing public, uh, this is a potential project that's out for bid on July twenty-ninth, and it's the resurfacing of Frontage Road between Cass Avenue and Bailey, or excuse me, Oldfield Road. Um, so again, it's a resurfacing project that's, so bids are supposed to be open on July twenty-ninth, and again, that is, uh, budget pending.
Thank you. Any other? Aldman Belkey.
Yes, since, since it's construction season, can you just tell the viewing, uh, residents, um, any other construction plans that they should be expecting this season, including things that we've put in the budget this year?
Sure. One of the items right now that's currently in, in play is the Seventy-Fifth Street lighting project. Uh, the Seventy-Fifth Street lighting project is moving along. They're in the process, so they just finished up putting in the conduit, they're running wires right now. The foundations are all in, the lights should be, uh, hopefully coming within the next several weeks, so we have a, uh, we're speaking with ComEd at this point to determine what's the closest power source. Uh, they wanted to, believe it or not, was, uh, install another pole fronting chase along with a transformer. So, staff base, staff had told them that we're not gonna be putting in additional pole along with a transformer there, so, uh, there's an alternate's location, but, uh, that was one of the discussions. As far as, um, the Bailey Road Plainfield project, that has now been pushed out to May sixteenth for an actual start. When I say an actual start, that means that, uh, the road, that's when the road will start to be torn up. Currently, uh, ComEd has been in there on Bailey Road right in the vicinity, as well as Nikor is currently there. Uh, there's a large, uh, high-pressure gas, some gas main that has to be relocated due to some of the ge, uh, geometrics of the roadway, as well as the proposed water main, uh, water, some water main conflicts. Um, in respect to the concrete program, the concrete program is really moving along. Obviously, we're, uh, letting residents know with signage. Uh, we're putting signage around the neighborhoods, uh, when the concrete program is starting. Um, it's been moving very fluidly and rapidly. Uh, within, we're also the base repair with Schroder, that's part of the road program. Uh, we're in the process of doing various, uh, road repairs, uh, for the base, so pretty soon, within the next couple of weeks, we're gonna start grinding. That schedule will also be out on Direct Connect, as well as on our cable channels. Uh, our ditch projects, our ditch projects are moving along. Currently, we have Western, uh, ninety percent completed. Uh, we have P and E at a ninety percent completion, and we're moving into Seventy-Second. Seventy-Second probably has about a twenty percent completion. Just recently laid out Sunrise, so we found some concerns on Sunrise, so we're not sure what that means at the end of the day. Um, but we're in the process of looking at some utility conflicts there.
Thank you.
Anything else for Dan?
I'm sorry, uh, one, uh, one for Paul. Paul, um, you had handed out the ComEd report, but I think you had a correction in terms of the summary. Sylvia had asked you if it was summarized by circuit?
Right, it is not by circuit, so I'm gonna, I'm summarizing that, and I'll send that out as additional correspondence.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Chief, do you have anything tonight?
No.
Uh, that takes us to our, um.
Mayor Protem Marques, this is, I, this is very unusual, but I, uh.
Would you like to address the council, Mayor Weaver?
Need to take the mic down, just a tad.
Kathleen Weaver, eleven twelve Foxtail Court, uh, Darian, Illinois. Uh, I, I was not here. I, I was over at District eighty-six. Uh, their board meeting this evening, their, their, uh, uh, they have a portion for audience participation. They will be addressing an issue that came forward to them at their last meeting about a food pantry being located at, uh, at Hinsdale South for District eighty-six, and all of the feeder schools that feed into District eighty-six. And I felt it was such an important issue that I, I, I wanted to address the board, so that's what I did this evening, so that's why I'm late. Thank you for, for taking over. But I do have a question, since I wasn't here for the consent agenda. Uh, Denler Land, uh, Landscaping, I've never heard of this company.
Denler Landscaping, or is that the crack ceiling?
A crack ceiling, I'm sorry, yes, crack ceiling. Where is this, where is this company located?
Denler has been, uh, I believe Denler did some work for us in the past, but they've been a player out there in the crack ceiling industry for years.
Okay, because they, they're new to us. We've never, we've never, um, had that company here.
On the insurance.
Yeah, yeah.
They've been, they have been out, uh, they've been around for a while, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you very much for that. I have some, uh, communications, but I'll share them at the end of the meeting, if that's okay? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, treasurer's report, uh, treasurer, Corrin.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, tonight, we have two warrant numbers, uh, in that we're crossing over our last fiscal year and into our new fiscal year, so we have some, uh, carryover from the prior fiscal year, so I'm requesting council's approval. Warrant number fifteen sixteen twenty-four, in the amount of two hundred twenty-five thousand, four hundred twenty-seven dollars and forty-five cents. Payroll for the periods ended April fourteenth and April twenty-eighth of two thousand sixteen, the amount of four hundred ninety-nine thousand, two hundred thirteen dollars and eighty-one cents, for a total be approved of seven hundred twenty-four thousand, six hundred forty-one dollars and twenty-six cents.
Motion to approve? Moved by Aldman Belzak, seconded by Aldman Shower. Questions for the treasurer? If none, the roll.
Belzak?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
I can give another warrant, Mike?
Uh, Happy New Year, the warrant for our current fiscal year, uh, warrant number sixteen seventeen oh one, requesting approval in the amount of five hundred eighty-five dollars from listed funds, for total be approved of five hundred eighty-five dollars. May all our warrants be so simple.
Motion to approve? Moved by Aldman Kenny, seconded by Aldman Belkey. Any questions?
I'll prove the easy one.
If none, the roll.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
I think Mike has some updates on the police pension.
Yeah, uh, last week, we had our quarterly police pension board meeting, and the investment advisors were there, so I received the quarterly update as far as the performance of our police pension fund assets, which total approximately twenty-three to twenty-four million dollars. Each manager handles approximately half of them, and it was a relatively good quarter, which is very good, since, I don't know if you recall, last quarter was relatively bad. And the way January started out, things weren't looking too good, but things turned around in February, March, April, as it turns out, they're not included in these numbers, which is the end of our fiscal year, and ended up slightly positive in my estimation, although, again, they're not included in these numbers. Uh, that being said, however, uh, the, uh, one money manager's performance for the quarter was a positive one point nine seven percent, so just under two percent, uh, positive performance, although for the current year-to-date, through the eleven months of our fiscal year, uh, it's a negative twenty-three basis points, so just under zero. Uh, the projections used in our, uh, actuarial calculations assume a seven percent rate of return, so naturally, we're not going to hit our bogey this year. Uh, that's with respect to one of the managers, that was MB Financial. The other money managers, Sawyer Full Dudo is their name, and their quarterly performance was a positive one point seven percent. And for the eleven months of the fiscal year, they're at a positive seventy-four basis points, so on average, the entire fund is about a break-even in terms of its investment performance for the last year, uh, which sort of makes sense in light of, I mean, the S and P, uh, starting last May. Uh, currently, we're down still three percent from last May. If you look at the overall S and P five hundred, which just doesn't necessarily track just that, because it is composed of fixed income as well as equity, uh, but as a quick benchmark, uh, we're, we're pretty much in the ballpark of where we should be, but, uh, overall, markets are not performing as excitingly as they were several years ago. So, that was all I had in terms of the fund performance. They also did take action on one other thing I wanted to advise the council on. We've been using an actuary, Tim Sharp, as you may or may not be aware. Every year, we present the actuarial report to you for purposes of determining the contribution for the subsequent fiscal year, uh, which is what, the amount that we budgeted, and, uh, they had some concerns about the actuary that was being used. So, the, uh, the president of the, uh, pension board went out for proposals from three different, uh, other actuarial firms, and they did decide to change the actuarial firm, starting for the current fiscal year, uh, to a firm named Foster and Foster. They seem like a fairly big firm, but, uh, I can't really opine on that. Uh, I did request that this new firm, however, do a presentation to the police pension board and also appear before the council, uh, so that we can ask them any questions and maybe get a little better understanding as far as where a significant amount of our budget money goes every year. And people probably got the real estate taxes today, so they saw that part on the real estate taxes, uh, as a, a highlight.
Aldman Shower?
Michael, what was their concerns with the actuary they replaced, did they say?
He didn't really come out and say. In fact, he said that he did not want to bring it up at a public meeting. Uh, one, one of the pension board members has been wanting to get him replaced for some time, and has been casting some dispersions, which, nothing that's ever been proven, uh, sort of some mudslinging, and he was uncomfortable with that. Uh, I was, personally, was just a little bit concerned. I did not agree with the RFP process, uh, because this, he's mentioned this before, and I said, "Well, we can go for an RFP," and I even mentioned it to our auditors, uh, and they said they had a list of actuarial firms that they have typically seen during the performance of their audits, and I offered to him back in February. I said, "I can get a list of those if you like," and he didn't solicit any outside input from that. He just went and got three of them on his own and presented those on, uh, on, uh, last Wednesday. Uh, one of the firms is the current company that does all the accounting and attends all our meetings and handles all the administrative. our meetings and handles all the administrative work for the police pension fund. They were actually the low bidder in terms of an RFP, but I did fight against them being appointed the actuary, just from the standpoint that I think it's important to have a separate set of eyes looking and reviewing the same numbers that they're working on all year long. So I was successful at least getting a firm other than the one that's doing that appointed.
I think you mentioned, Mike, this is a one-year contract?
Well, when they proposed it, again, they wanted to go with this other, well, the one person wanted to go with this other firm, and I think in order to sort of satisfy me for the short term anyway, he proposed that we only go with a one-year contract for the new company that we're moving with. I don't know if it's in hopes of getting back to the company that's doing the administrative work or not, but again, I would still fight it on the same grounds if that's the direction they choose to go. Not a lot we can do. There's five members of the police pension board. Three of them are police officers, and two of them are appointed, members appointed by the mayor, so...
Three to two.
Well, assuming that they all go that way, not necessarily...
Mike, I think, I think the makeup is always one retired officer, right?
One retired, current active officers, and then two individuals appointed by the mayor, yes.
And you mentioned Foster and Foster will come to the city council meeting. Is that prior to their report, just for questions?
No, to present the report.
To present the report, good.
Because what typically happens is, usually at our July meeting, I try to have the actuary report prepared for that, because they have to act on it before they decide what they want to present to the council as far as what they want to request for next year's budget. So I have them come to the July meeting and have the pension board ask for what they want to ask for. That doesn't mean we have to go along with that. Tim Sharp, the prior actuary, gave us several alternatives, and we, to your credit, I've always asked for a hundred percent funding of that. The state only requires ninety percent funding, but we have been funding it a hundred percent, which I think is great. But seeing this less, investment return, I don't know where the numbers are going to go this year. So, but that's something we can always revisit. We sort of have this cushion. We have been funding it a hundred percent for the last several years. So we have actually built up a little cushion in our financial statements, if we ever should need to pull that back a little bit, to still do what's legal and authorized, but without the full amount. But I don't want to jump the gun and say that's the way we're going to go until we let them do their calculation, see where the numbers come out this year, and take an intelligent look at it.
Now, is this new company, are fees more or less than what we currently pay for a current company?
Dramatically more. Actually, all three proposals were dramatically more. Two out of the three were approximately double what we were paying. We were paying twenty-nine hundred. One came in at sixty-eight hundred. The one that we're going with was six thousand. And the one that I was uncomfortable with, unfortunately, they were, like I said, they were the low bidder. They were about forty-eight hundred, which still would have been almost a couple thousand dollars higher than we were current paying, well, they're paying. It's not we, the city, that's paying. They pay it out of the funds in the police pension fund, but the amount of the assets they have in there naturally bears a direct relation to what contribution we have to put in, because instead of having twenty-four million in the fund, we have twenty-three million, but we need fifty million fifteen or twenty years from now. Obviously, the higher the expense, the less we have, fewer assets we have performing for us to try to keep that number down in the future.
Anything else from Mike? Thanks, Mike. Standing committee reports. Alderman, MacIver?
Thank you. I was going to say Madam Mayor, but I guess I'm...
I'd be offended.
The next meeting of the police committee is scheduled for Monday, May sixteenth, at six PM, in the police department training room across the parking lot.
Thank you. Alderman Shower?
Thank you. The minutes from the April fourth admin finance meeting have been approved and submitted to the clerk's office, and our next admin finance meeting will be held on Monday, June sixth, twenty sixteen, at six PM in our upstairs meeting room.
And I'll report on the municipal services. We approved the minutes of the March twenty-eighth to twenty sixteen meeting, and we sent those minutes to the clerk. And our next meeting is May twenty-third, twenty sixteen, at six thirty here in the council chambers. Questions and comments, agenda-related, is anybody in the, have any questions regarding to the agenda, any agenda items? Anybody in the audience have any questions regarding? It takes us to old business and there being no old business. We have a very lengthy consent agenda, and a lot of these items are purchase items for municipal services that were looked at last week by the municipal services committee meeting. They go from items A through, I believe, item T, and I'm not going to read all of them, but I would ask for a motion to approve. Moved by Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Belkey. And the roll?
Kenny?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Marquez?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Consent agenda is approved under new business, item A. Consideration of a motion to approve the reappointment of department heads, Brian Vanna, City Administrator Greg Thomas, Police Chief, and Daniel Gombach, Director of Municipal Services, drive a motion. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Shower. Discussion? If none, the roll?
Belzak?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Marquez?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Gentlemen, want to come forward?
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, and state your name.
I am Brian Vanna.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Illinois
and the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
and that I will faithfully discharge
I will faithfully discharge.
the duties of
the duties of City Administrator
the duties of Police Chief, Municipal Services.
according to the best of my ability.
according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thanks so much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Brian.
Congratulations.
Item B, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing a private property development stormwater management assistance project for nine-one-four Ironwood Avenue in an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars, and accepting a proposal from Grade A in an amount not to exceed seven thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars for a total project cost of twenty-two thousand dollars. Motion to approve. Moved by Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Belkey. Discussion. Alderman MacIver?
Thank you, Alderman, Mayor Proton Marquez. Items B and C on the new business refer to private property drainage improvements, and during the budget session, I specifically came out and spoke out against the city participating in private property improvements, kind of trying, actually, moving away from programs that make these kind of improvements at these significant costs to a very limited number of residents. So I just wanted to make sure that I made that point.
Thank you. Alderman Belkey?
Yeah, I wanted to mention that in the work session, we did talk about these items, and we also talked about putting this on the municipal list for next year, or the goal-setting session, and/or to revisit the program as well, and make sure it's working for what it was intended to, et cetera.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I agree with Alderman MacIver. We talked about this in the last time, and you get to a point where you, you know, just because you've always done it, doesn't make, you know, reason you should continue to do it. These projects are getting costlier. Yeah, and it's private property rights, and I hold hardly agreeing with her, so.
Anything else? If not, the roll?
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
No.
Marquez?
Aye.
MacIver?
No.
Shower?
Aye.
Five ayes and two nays.
Motion is approved. Item C, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing a private property development stormwater management assistance project for seven-eight-one-four and seven-eight-one-eight Stratford Place in an amount not to exceed eight thousand, seven hundred dollars. Motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Belkey. Discussion. If none, the roll?
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
No.
Marquez?
Aye.
MacIver?
No.
Shower?
Aye.
Five ayes and two nays.
Motion is approved. Item D, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance amending section nine dash three dash two, prohibited parking of chapter three, parking restrictions, title nine, traffic regulations of the Darien City Code. Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Belkey. Discussion.
I was just going to say, for the viewing audience, maybe just explain what this is?
Over the last three to four years, we've had significant issues with regard to parking in and around Hinsdale South High School, specifically on days of events, as well as during the day. This is an issue that Municipal Services has dealt with a number of times, and every time it's been presented to us, we've surveyed the residents in the affected areas. We've asked for their input. We've posted signs. We've tried to be as open-minded as possible with regard to the residents and their needs, as well as the needs of the, of the school with regard to its events. This is, we've enacted several prohibitions against parking in certain streets. This is another street that, as Alderman Belkey says, we seem to be moving further east, and it seems to be affecting this area now. So this was done specifically, this was brought to our attention specifically because there was an incident, I believe, Dan, was it an ambulance, or was it a fire truck?
In this case, it was an ambulance along with the fire truck. I'm not sure, and I believe the fire engine was the one that was stuck.
Right, and there was a picture that accompanied this, and if you saw the parking, it was very narrow. It didn't allow for the ambulance or the fire truck to get down the street. So rather than coming before committee, Municipal, Director Gombach brought this directly to the council for approval tonight. So this is another, in a long list of changes that we've made to parking surrounding Hinsdale South. And as we talked about this in the work session, there doesn't seem to be any incentive on the part of the school to assist us in this effort. So this is something we've had to deal with, specifically, even though we've asked for their help in the past, this is not something that they've chosen to deal with. Anything else? Alderman Belzak?
The only question I have in regard to this is the language that we use that says no high school or event parking at any time, and I'm just wondering if we've had any issues with the word "event" because it's such a vague word, and whether anyone's tried to say, well, it wasn't an event, it was something else, and therefore, I shouldn't get a ticket. Or have we thought about just saying residential parking, only to make it more clear?
I believe, Dan, that we've used that word "event" on all the other signs that we have...
Correct. While we have, there has not been any issues, nor have we been challenged on it.
So if a private resident was having a party, we'll say, would that be considered an, would that be considered an event?
No.
No.
It's not a high school event, and if residents want to take the extra step, they could call the police department again, as a courtesy, if there was an issue and a police officer was driving by, that police officer would take the opportunity to stop at that residence and see if they were having a party before, prior to start ticking them.
To Alderman Belzak's, you know, credit, it says no high school or event parking. It doesn't say no high school events. It says no high school or event parking. So back to my question, could a, could a party of a residence on both sides of the street be considered, be considered an event?
In our opinion, the answer is no.
Okay.
We thought there, like, a Darien Fest or other events, when this was originally talked about, would fall in that category, but yes, not the, not the property owners who live in that area.
Well, I think as long as we haven't had a problem, I'm not concerned about it. I just wondered if we did ever have a problem, because it is a vague term.
Correct, and we have not had any concerns.
Anything else? If none, then the roll?
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Marquez?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Questions, comments, or announcement from the aldermen? From the audience, welcome Mayor Weaver.
Okay, again, I received a letter from Argon National Laboratories. They're having their, their big event, their open house, May twenty-first. If you've never gone, it's worthwhile going. It's quite, quite special. I don't think I'm going to make it. It's my granddaughter's first Holy Communion Day, but it's May twenty-first, and if anyone on the council would like to go, let me know, because they're extending an invitation to meet to, they're having a VIP buffet at noon at the guesthouse on this, during this event. So I just wanted to let the, the public know about it. We want to get this on direct connect. It's a very, residents can go, and they can go around and go to all the buildings and learn what's going on at the, at the lab. It's quite a special place. So that's, that's one thing I wanted to mention. How many, have you all gotten the banner news? Okay, what was interesting, the first, the first, second paragraph, actually, was their dial-a-ride, they're reducing the price on dial-a-ride, and from five dollars to four dollars. You know, it's a, it's a competing event with our program through DePage County, but it's still, you know, worthwhile making sure our residents know. That's another issue I'd like to get on, out on direct connect. But if, there's lots, I don't know if you had a chance to read it, there's lots of stuff that they're doing, so. As much as I think that government, that level of government overlaps what we do, at least the programs that they are providing are pretty good, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that this week, on Friday and Saturday, the Darien Historical Society is holding their tag day, which is a fundraiser for the Historical Society. I believe they're only going to be on the corner
On Saturday.
On Saturday. Otherwise, they're going to be in front of the jewel, I believe, on Friday.
Correct.
So they ask for your support. This is one of their fundraisers that assists them for their projects within the Historical Society building, and so...
Now, how many have volunteered to be tagged? Okay, all right, very good.
I didn't get, I didn't volunteer.
All right, the rest of you be there, be square, okay?
I'll be in Louisville, Kentucky.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Alderman MacIver?
Sure, thank you. I just wanted to mention that there's a local electronic and book recycling event coming up on Saturday, the twenty-first, I believe, it's the right date for Saturday, from nine AM to noon at Christ the Servant Church at Havens and Woodward, which is, or Havens and eighty, and Bowton Ray, basically, or Havens and eighty-seventh Street. You can go to the Christ the Servant website for more information, and I think it's also being posted in the direct connect, the information there, but it's a great way to get rid of some things. Now, they don't take everything, so look at the bulletin to get the information.
Anything else? If nothing else, motion to adjourn. Alderman MacIver, seconded by Alderman Shower. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.